This is the Albernett Council meeting for Thursday, April 12, 2018. We'll get going here in just a moment. Prior to starting, I would ask that anyone present silence any of your items you may have in your phones and things like that. You silence those before we get started, just as a courtesy to not only the council, but to the folks in the room. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Prior to taking our pledge or swearing in of our new council member, I see that our Lynn County Deputy has shown up, so we'll go ahead and advance him to the top of the agenda and let him go ahead and give his report so he can get back on the road. Deputy?
Thanks. Well, I'm Deputy Snow.
Yeah, please, thank you. Thank you. What do you need to know? Looks like we've got a required hours in. Okay, I've had a chance to review this. You had 68.5 hours out of the 43 required. I don't have any questions over this. Does the council have any questions for Lynn County Deputy Deputy Snow?
Nope.
Any questions for councilman Snow?
I have another question.
All right, ask.
Here several weeks ago, we had some break-ins here in town, and I don't expect any... Have we caught the person? Do you have any ideas? No, if you're not with me. I don't want to know anything about them, I just was curious. I've been asked where they've been caught.
Okay. Any other questions for Deputy Snow? All right, so no other questions. Thank you, we appreciate it. Have a good evening, sir.
Thanks for all your hard work and showing up early.
All right. Other than the comments I had before, is there any other amendments clerked to the agenda?
I don't believe so. I think the current agenda is as is.
All right, seeing that there's no other amendment to the agenda, then I'd seek a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Move.
Move by Trump.
Second.
Second by Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, let's move to the pledge allegiance. If you'd all stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and swear in our new council member. Josh Henderson is our new council member. He has been elected by special election. I believe that was on April 3rd. And so he joins us. He does fill a vacancy that was created last... Gosh, I don't know if you even remember that date, but he created that vacancy, or that vacancy was created and he did fill that. So if you would stand, Josh, come over here and get in position with somebody, take a photo, please. We can add that to our new website. Michael Harrison. So. This is an official swearing. And repeat after me. Are you ready?
Yep.
I, Josh Henderson.
I, Josh Henderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge all the...
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
The office of council member.
In Albernett, Iowa.
Albernett, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
That's all of it. You're lucky, I could've done like three of them right in a row.
Take hands.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the Albernett Council. I should've just read the whole thing until he started really... Around about the third sentence, he started really nervous.
Note to self. You would've grabbed it.
Well, very good. Having that completed, clerk, would you take roll call so we can reflect the record now with the new council?
Absolutely. Menson.
Yes.
Sarison.
Here.
Shantz.
Present.
Trump.
Here.
And Hendrickson.
Here.
Very good. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum present this evening and a full council. That's excellent. All right, I did the approval prior to on there, and the sheriff's report is complete. For the mayor's report this evening, I would like to note, I didn't get it on the council, but we had discussed it previously. This came up in conversations because of the vacancy that we have on the E-911 board for Albernett. And I had a short conversation with the 911 board, as well as the appointment on the EMA board, which we had discussed previously, both with this council and in previous meetings. But I believe it's the council's desire, unless other committees would bring them up, that Mayor Pro Tim Sarison will set as the representative on the EMA board. That normally sets as a mayor's position, but it's a potential conflict for me to hold that position because of my civilian position with the city of Cedar Rapids as the 911 director, because of the potential consolidation of 911 centers within the county. That will not always be a conflict for me, but it is within the next 12 to 18 months. So I do appreciate you taking that on. She has already attended one of the meetings. I think you've seen that as an administrative action in email that she volunteered to take care of that. And then the other position is on the 911 board. She would hold the primary position. Ron Hoover would sit as alternate until such time as he completes his current role as secretary on the 911 executive board. So I don't want any formal action on it tonight, just because it wasn't an agenda item, but I did want to go ahead and discuss that. And is there any discussion or concerns with that from the council? Very good, thank you. And then, I don't have anything else I didn't say. We are moving forward now. We have a full council. We'll have more things coming up within the next few months. We're excited about that. Looking forward to moving now quicker on the fire department and getting that moved to the top of the list. The only other item that we have setting out there is the hiring of the clerk's position. It is posted. The application process is being handled by our interim clerk. And during that report tonight from the maintenance clerk guy, I'm sure you'll address that on where we're at with that process. So that'll be coming later in the process. I don't have any other comments under my mayor's report, but we'll hear from council members now of any comments they have recognized. Councilman Wilson?
Just thanks to you guys for the hiring committee. I know it's been ups and downs. I appreciate it.
Well, it's one of those things where the committee's done a really good job with that. We want to make sure we have it done right, not fast, so that's the process we're going through. Thank you.
I just got to make a comment that I think the ladies that are coming up from Robbins and helping us out are doing a fantastic job.
Yes.
And I've told them thank to myself, but I just think they're doing great.
Yeah, we definitely will recognize them formally once we get our clerk in place. I do have an opportunity, as a mayor has said, on a monthly meeting. And at that monthly meeting, Mayor Hance from Robbins is there, and I've already told him many times that we certainly appreciate their help. The mutual aid agreement we have in place with Robbins shares resources for the public present, and it has definitely been beneficial to the cities. Now, Councilman Trump?
Nothing to say. Just appreciate the opportunity to work with you all, and I'm excited to get started and continue to be working with you all so.
Very good. All right, item number nine is citizen comments. These are agenda item comments. There will be two opportunities for the folks in the audience to speak. The first one is for citizen comments that are items on the agenda. If you wish to make any comments, you'll have up to five minutes to do so. Just state your name and your address, clear it for the record, and you can speak up to five minutes and make any comments that you wish to do so. Again, these are for agenda items. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to item 10. These are citizen comments, also the five-minute limit, just state your name and address, clear it for the record. And then you can make any comments that you have for the council. These are for non-agenda items, so this is just the format. But if you're present and you wish to make any comments to the council, you can do so at this time.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you said that anybody's...
Would you state your name also for the record, please?
Nancy Fuller.
And you're Albernett resident?
No.
Okay, then just...
I'm in school district, yes.
You don't have to give me your address, but if you're not from Albernett, where you're from?
Tonto.
Okay, go ahead.
Originally from Albernett.
Very good. Go ahead, ma'am.
When you first stated that we could talk about something on the agenda, I am on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm kind of confused about what you meant by "talk about something on the agenda," because what if he's talking about something on the agenda? And now I want to discuss it, but I don't know what he's going to talk about.
If you're specifically on the agenda, then at that time, you can also speak if you want to. But a lot of times, citizens will be present, they'll see an item on the agenda, and they want to specifically address it. And so we give them an opportunity to do that.
Okay, so at this point, I just wait my turn for some sun.
If you want to, that'll be fine. Yeah, you're not losing your right to talk. We'll make sure we get that on there. Okay. All right, at this time, then we'll move on to written reports. We'll hear from the Public Works Director, interim clerk, at this time.
I think my report pretty much says it all. We did get the water control system. I'll just show you real briefly what it looks like. There's more work to be done, as the report says. And Josh, I don't... Come on. Of course. There it is. There is a little bit more work to be done tweaking things. It went fairly smoothly. There was a couple of problems, nothing terrible that we had to address. We had one little heart attack moment on Tuesday. I believe that was the day that I was at... I know it was, I think it was Tuesday, but anyway, I was at Iowa City at a training, and I just happened, while I was at the training, I happened to check the SCADA. Oh, why is this not cooperating with me? There, we got it. I happened to check the numbers and et cetera. And while I was at the conference, and that, our lift station was up to nine feet. And if any of you really know that, know anything about our system, nine feet's bad. Two more feet and it starts backing up in people's basements. So had a little heart attack moment there. Turned out, the pump must've been running when the generator did its transfer test, and it made, it kicked on a fault. I called John, he got there and got them turned on, but I could not turn on the pumps from this remote system to get this problem alleviated. So they are working diligently to figure that out. But that's what we think happened, is when the generator kicked on, it threw a manual and mechanical fault out there at the lift station. So we'll get it fixed. But it was a good problem to have, to know that that could happen, so we'll get it there. But here's our four units, the small lift station, the main lift station, wellhouse three, and main control. On smartphone or any computer, I can, it's all web-based, I can just go to it. Right now, there's 18.3 feet in our water tower. The pumps are not running, and as of today, there's 124.8 pounds of chlorine in the cylinder. And so I'm taking most of my readings right here from the system, and I haven't got good enough with it yet to do all of the, all of the things that it has available to us, but we can, there's all kinds, we can go to the second as to how many feet are in the water tower, how often the pumps are kicking on. The amount of data that's going to be available to us is actually staggering. A lot of it we won't need, but if we're trying to track a problem, we're going to have it at our fingertips, so it's all right there. Once we get all the alarms set up and get everything working as it should, then I'll let John have access so that he can do it if I'm unavailable. And maybe eventually, depending on the new clerk hire, they can have that access as well, if it's just a matter of turning on a well pump for a fire issue or whatever. But it is working. I can, I could definitely go to the main control system and turn on the pump right now, if you wanted me to. No reason to do it, but about two toggles, I have to enable the SCADA system and then choose which pump that I want to start and hit on, and it's going to fire up and run. So it's doing exactly what we had hoped it would do. None of the bills for this are in this pay cycle, because it's not complete, but we'll probably have to pay for a lot of that before next month's meeting. So I'll send out an email when it's complete, and I'm satisfied with the system and let you know, you know, US Cellular is already billing us for 9,000 and some odd dollars for the actual equipment. And there's a bill from LEC for, I believe it slid over 5,000 for a lot of their programming and their part of the deal. And then there'll be a bill from Tri-City, who LEC subcontracted to do the actual install. So as far as I know, everything will come in as it was quoted. Pricewise, the only thing over and above will be the work at the small lift station. John and I built a new structure to hold all the electrical equipment, and we had to hire Tri-City to move that equipment, because it was on an old pole that was leaning over and half rotted through. And so we had to have an electrician, we had to have a line come and disconnect, pull the meter and disconnect the power, get everything transferred to the new structure, and get it in place, and then hook the power back up. That's all done. The only thing left to do is install a level measuring device in that pit, because it never had one before. It more or less was like your sump pump, it had a floating valve, and when it got so high, it would kick the pumps on and then shut off when it went down. So because we put the system in, we put a, oh, there's a name for it, I can't get right now, but a level sensor, submersible level sensor in the pit, we'll be able to watch it and see its cycle and then determine if there's problems with it. So, and have an alarm more than just a light bulb that comes on that we've never had before. So, so far, so good. Once we get a few wrinkles hammered out, I think it's going to be all we were expecting. So beyond that, I think the report is self-explanatory for the most part, except the weather's going to turn here and it's going to get crazy trying to be here in City Hall and get stuff done outside, because John's going to have to not, he's going to have to go to the field, and he's not going to be able to give me the hours that he has been, so.
I would like to recommend that you don't show John all the bells and whistles.
No.
But just the basics.
Yep.
And the sooner the better, because you're gone and whatever.
Yep, yep. So it's next week, this week, there was no time for it, because I just learned how to do some of this stuff this week. But next week, I'll set all the alarms that I want to come through and how they come through. That's the other thing, too, is we can set every, every alarm that we want either to come as email or to a device, to a smartphone or tablet, and it can come either or, and it can, you can send certain alarms to this device and certain alarms to that email, and so that's going to take some time to get that all plugged in there, but it's going to be a much more reliable alarm system on the system. So I'll set some of the major alarms, the ones that really will cause us a problem to John, so that in case I don't answer him, he sees them come through. But yeah, he'll know how to do the basics, but that's about it. Any other questions on my report or the system?
The only thing I would say with the system, and obviously not in the near term, because I know you're slum, but I'd like to see documentation started, too. As we're learning it, that's a great time to get down, you know, what the clicks are and the steps and how to set up the alarms, because after they're implemented for a couple of years, you forget how to do that.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely, no problem. And so far, LEC's been great to work with as far as, hey, how do I do this? They're on it immediately, so that part has been great, too. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Unless you have more questions.
Are you still doing manual validations on the readings, just to be sure everything's stable?
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. And we still have a little issue they're trying to work out. The first of May at the main lift station, they can't. That's a number that just continually rolls up, you know, the flow meter has got a number on it, and it's been years, you know, it just keeps rolling up, rolling up. So they can't really match that. So on the first of May, we're going to reset the flow meter to zero, record that number, reset the flow meter to zero, and hopefully the flow, the number they're capturing with the system equals. So we're going to, we're going to record it manually, manually like we always have, and record it off of the SCADA and make sure that the values are the same, because there can be discrepancies in those signals. And as long as they're close, we'll probably just capture the number here at the SCADA, but we will always have that counter in that flow meter going on down there. So, but if we reset them to zero at exactly the same time, then, you know, we should have an accurate number and we'll be able to double-check against it. Same with the two, the three wells for the, for the water system, we can still always see them manually on the screen. That part's not going to change. We can, we can always see that. So we could, I think I might go to a once-a-week recording of those gallons, because that will, you know, give us the backup that we need. Instead of recording it each day manually, record it once a week, and then we have a backup, so, absolutely.
Any other questions on the maintenance report? Very good, thank you, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the fire department report. I see Chief Graham's present. We have an opportunity to review your report. I did want to say thank you for the good work on the grants and for the events. Chief, go ahead.
I've got a few more things. I'll tell you about the numbers for calls. All right, so we give a dollar per call, meeting, whatever. The first column of the calls for last year, and the second set of columns is for the meetings. And then, I don't know why I put it up there, but up in this top corner says FB 2017, top left corner, 1,080. That's what you guys owe us for that, but we're going to wait. And once you do our mail, let's track it out like we always do.
Does that come up this weekend?
This weekend. So next month, we can do the difference and give us a check for difference.
All right, there you go.
And then, I only print it two, but we need some adult and e-tracked AED pads. That's what the prices are at some point in the month, so see where they get them from.
This is a request or this is a addition to?
This would be a request.
Oh, okay.
They're expiring soon. They need to get ones, and it'll take a couple months to get it.
Okay.
What did you say they are?
AED pads.
AED?
Yeah. E-tracked.
These are your pads to tie on for the AEDs?
Yeah.
Okay.
They expire, but they'll be used.
That's good.
How many AED units do we have?
We got four, one for each truck, but we don't use two.
And do all the pads expire at the same time, or are they staggered right now?
They're staggered out.
So this quantity's correct, you need one of each?
Yeah.
Is that something you need approved immediately?
It wouldn't hurt, yeah, because I'm supposed to do it last minute, and you didn't do it at the same time.
Do you know where you order them from and all that?
I work at Cent Point, they didn't get papers.
Oh, oh, they, oh, you've got the information.
They get them from this company, and I get them from Cent Point.
Okay, okay.
So Cent Point will send me a bill, or you a bill.
Okay.
Somebody a bill.
That reminds me, there's stacked fires, there's stacked fire stuff on the counter you need to grab, what do you think?
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
171.50 is the total you want to approve here?
Yeah.
Liz will be here Monday, so if you guys approve it just as an addition to the consent agenda, then she can, you know, cut the check.
It won't be.
Okay.
It'll probably be next month before I get a check.
Oh, or before you get the bill, okay.
I'll order them.
Just approval to get them going, to get it going, okay.
Just approval, I'll order them.
I'll make a motion that we purchase these, are they stamped pads? For a total of 171.50.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Shantz.
Your vote is purchased. My second motion.
Seconded by Councilman Menson. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Good, chief.
And then, I got a credit for our service training. We never paid it, but they sent me credit, and why is it look like you guys were in default the whole time?
Oh.
So it's just for your records that...
Okay.
We never paid the bill, but they credited us back, because it shows that we owed them money.
Okay, all right, so they had to do it to clear their books more than anything else, okay.
I just wanted you to have a copy, so...
Yes, yep, I'll put it in the file. Okay, yep, no problem.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thanks, Chief Graham. All right, we'll move on to item 12. Or, I'm sorry, was there any other questions, Chief? Okay. We'll move on to item 12, the consent agenda. That includes the approval of the minutes from the previous March meeting, and I had an opportunity to approve those. Motion to approve the bills that's submitted, is there any other addition to those?
No.
No, okay. And that'll include the motion for the financial report as well, so if there's no other changes to those or questions, I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Move by Menson.
Moving.
Seconded by Trump. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, well, then we'll move on to 13, the new business for this evening. Item A, I'm going to do my best here. Joe Hordon, nay?
Perini.
Perini, very good, all right. Well, I was trying to use my letters there. Perini. I'll get it right the next time.
It's the best way to identify tell marketers when they call, so it's been so good.
Your update from Solid Waste and the council recognizes you now.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
I'm sure it's going to include no increases?
Yeah, it's like you're looking at my third slide. But I'm the communications director for the Solid Waste Agency, here to give our annual update. And just a brief history of the agency, we're a 28E organization, so we formed back in 1994 when the city of Cedar Rapids and Lynn County combined. So we're not part of the city, we're not part of the county, but we represent both. Our board of directors, we have nine members, six officials from the city of Cedar Rapids, two Lynn County supervisors, and one appointee from the city of Marion, and that's based on population in Lynn County. And I'm going to talk to you tonight about our two locations that we operate, first being County Home Road location down here, we call that Site 2 internally. And first, the good news, disposal fees, no rate changes for FY '19 coming up here July 1st. So the garbage rate's going to remain $40 per ton. The flat fees for residents, our cars, SUVs, minivans, it's a $10 flat fee, so you could have one bag of garbage in there, and that should be completely full of garbage, it's a $10 flat fee. Same thing for pickup trucks and full-size van, one bag of garbage or completely full, it's a $20 flat fee. So I've had some upset people stop in the office, be like, hey, I can fit this in the cab of my truck. If you come in a pickup truck, it's going to cost you $20. So we're trying to tell people, if you're coming out, get your money's worth, have a jam-packed full of garbage. Otherwise, we encourage folks just to buy our garbage stickers from your garbage alert, because it's a lot cheaper. So I got that, I closed this last year. We had people coming out there on Saturdays, it's really busy, they had like one or two bags of garbage, we're like, why are you coming out here? And they're like, oh, it's a nice day on Saturday, without a take a drop-out to the dump, you know, get rid of them. Please, take advantage of your curbside services, come to us as the last resort with your garbage. Uh, other fees, yard waste stays the same, it's at twenty-four dollars per ton with a five dollar minimum for yard waste. Our TVs and monitors, we do have to charge for those, and it's based on screen size. If the, if it's eighteen inches or smaller, it's ten dollars per unit, if it's nineteen inches or bigger screen, it's fifteen dollars per unit. And that does include the big old CRT TVs, the really heavy one. We still see some of those coming in, actually more than you probably believe. Uh, and the two messages that we're giving out a lot to the community, uh, this spring, uh, one, one, let folks know, have your load, uh, tarp'd and covered if you're coming in. I'm sure you guys see a lot, county home road here, trucks coming down, if you're coming up Highway thirteen, get that people coming out to us, the garbage blows off, it's a big problem. So if they come into our facility and they're not tarp, we give them a fine. For residents, it's ten dollars per load, if it's commercials, twenty-five dollars per load. However, if the sheriff goes to catch somebody and they see one piece of paper blown out, they can pull them over, and that's a ticket for spilling loads on the highway, that's three hundred and thirty dollars. So, remind folks, keep our roads clean, because this time of year, we hire temp workers, we have them out there picking up, catching up after all that snow melts off, all the stuff that came out over the winter. So, we do our best to try and keep it clean, so we want residents to do that too. And then, uh, the other messages, like I said, Saturdays are pretty crazy, especially once we get some decent weather coming up here. You'll, you'll see lines that take anywhere from ten to fifteen, sometimes twenty minutes, went between that like eight to one o'clock on Saturday. So, if you can avoid Saturday, please come on a Tuesday or Wednesday, you'll get in a lot quicker. Uh, that takes us inside to our building, our resource recovery building, where all the recycling drop off is. And then the slide there, the residential and commercial recycling, for our Lynn County residents, you can still drop off your recycling for no charge, such as paper, plastic, cardboard. And then, uh, we announced, I think it was last year, we talked about how our contract for recycling had gone up eighty-eight percent. And so we asked the communities, you know, we're gonna pay, uh, more than half of it to pay for the processing, we're asking the communities to pick up the other half for the haulers for bringing that in. The FD has not changed, um, so I told you, we were hoping that the recycling market would improve, we had a one-year contract with Republic Services. The recycling markets have not improved, they've gotten worse. So we negotiated another extension, um, and it actually did go up a little bit, but the agency's gonna eat that. So if you're a hauler, I know Alvernet's, you choose your own hauler community, whoever, if you're F Rod or ABC, if they're bringing us their recycling, they're not gonna see an increase when they bring that in. So fees are remaining the same. Uh, also inside that building is where we take electronics, besides TVs and monitors, we take all the electronics from residents for no charge, so old vacuum cleaners, hair dryers, uh, DVD players, receivers, those can all be dropped off for free. Batteries, we also take for no charge. Your alkaline batteries, the regular household ones, your triple A nine-volt C and D, when they're used up, throw them away. Those don't need to be recycled, uh, there's no hazardous materials that you have to worry about, there's not enough material they recover out of it that's worth to recycle. But all other ones, your lithium, lead acid, rechargeable, here again, watch batteries, those do need to be recycled, we take them for free. The big thing we're pushing that for is those lithium batteries, when they get run over by our equipment, they can start fires. We had three little ones that broke out last year, we can put it out right away, good thing we have a fire chief on staff, make sure we do it the right way. Um, but it, it's a big issue, like the fire that they had in the city last year, that wasn't a real big one, a couple years ago, but they had a decent sized one, they think that was a battery that sparked that, so. We take them for free, please drop them off. And then household hazardous materials, again, no charge for that as long you're a Lynn County resident, so anything, uh, paints, chemicals, stains, cleaners, fertilizers. If you have, you know, go out to Grandpa's house and you find something in the clear bottle and you're not sure what it is, we take that for no charge. Anytime we're open, seven to four-thirty, Monday through Saturday. Just outside the building is where we take appliances, uh, tires and scrap metal. We do have to charge for appliances and tires, and those fees are remaining the same, so it's nine dollars per appliance. And then tires, it's three dollars per tire, up to eight, and if you have more than eight, it's fifteen cents per pound. We weigh those, like if we get a big, like tractor tire, we weigh those, and it's fifteen cents per pound. And scrap metal, no charge for scrap metal. And we, I'd like to remind folks, with scrap metal, if you think it has value, take it down to Marion Iron, so you get paid for it. Us can basically just get like old lawn mowers and snowmowers and things like that. I had a really upset contractor who was in from out of town, he dropped off all this stuff, and he's like, comes, comes to the way out, he's like, alright, how much do I get? What are you talking about? And he's like, I just dropped off a bunch of wood in there, like, we don't have to pay for that, you know, this is more for residents, so he was pretty upset. But yeah, so you can tell everybody, go to Marion Iron if you wanna get paid, if you have just junk you wanna get rid of in one stop, drop it off with us. Environmental education, we do have a licensed teacher on staff, I know he was up here at Alvernet School just a week or two ago, had a really good time with that. So he's available as a resource, this is our busy time of year, we have tours coming out there, he's out in school, so if you know anyone looking for that stuff. We have Earth Day coming up with a big EcoFest event down at Newble City Market, uh, so we have a lot going on, but he, he's available as a resource to all Lynn County communities. And then our landfill gas energy system's still going really well, you know, it used to be, you drive up Highway thirteen at night, you'd see that flare going, looked pretty cool. Well now, if you don't see that flare going, that's a good thing, that just means that we're creating electricity. This gas energy system captures the methane and other gases, converts them into electricity, and it creates enough that we power about eleven hundred Lynn County homes each day. And then when this goes down for maintenance, the flare goes back on, so those landfill gases are never accumulating, they're getting burned off, returned into electricity. Uh, Monarch Zone, uh, we've been having really good luck with this, this is a picture of one of our rearing tents, we now have three on site. And in the last two years, we produced five hundred monarch butterflies on site. So that's been pretty good, helping with, you know, their pollinators. We realized though, when they come out, they need things to eat, there's kind of a milkweed shortage around here, so it's like, we gotta, we have to plant a pollinator mix with some milkweed in there. So to do that the right way, we had to bring in two hundred and forty goats, you'll see that on the next slide. Last October, September, and October, we had two hundred and forty goats on site to clear the old thirty-acre landfill when we first come into the site. They were off on the right-hand side there, they ate about an acre each day, and they did a great job. You're supposed to do a prescribed burn when you're planting a pollinator mix, but being it's a landfill and there's methane coursing through it, without me, that's probably not the best idea, not approved by the state. So, the goats came in, they had the same effect, we put that pollinator mix on right before the winter, so we're hoping to see some good results here. So in the future, if those miners come out of their rearing tent and just fly across the street, have some, uh, of the milkweed that's growing there. Next, uh, our Mount Trashmore overlook, the overlook is basically complete, there's still some landscaping work that needs to be done here this spring when the weather improves, but that is done. And then starting May first, we're gonna start working on a, a couple trail systems that will be there. So there'll be a walking, uh, trail that will go to the top, folks will be able to ride their mountain bikes up to the top. And then we're gonna have a floor trail that goes from the bottom for the mountain bikers, that's just for mountain bikers going down. And it's gonna be like a five thousand, uh, foot walk-up, so almost a mile all the way up there, the way it's gonna wind around. So we're pretty excited about this, there's no access to the site right now until the construction is complete, it should take about six to eight weeks, so we hope to have it done by late June, early July. We'll have a big ribbon cutting ceremony for that, and I included a flyer that we're giving out to folks right now, because we have people driving into the site every day going, can I go up there? And say, not yet, but here's what you need to know when we open up. And the big thing with that is, it will be limited access, because Mount Trashmore is a regulated site still, and there is a gas collection system down there as well, we have a flare for the, the gases down there. So there's things that we can't give access to it all the time, but we're gonna try to make it available as much as we can to the public, and it should be a great, uh, community resource, and it really is the best view in Lynn County. And, uh, another reason that there's restricted access is because it still isn't a working compost facility, so you can't take garbage there anymore, you can't take, uh, recycling down there anymore. That's where you can, you know, you cut down a tree, you have a huge stump, that's the place that you can take it to down there. And, uh, as for our compost, we do give away our compost for no charge to Lynn County residents, uh, it's really good stuff, it's, we have it tested in independent labs and it's certified by the US Compost业 Council before we give it out. So, I, I take the complaints from the agency, uh, the only complaints I've gotten about our compost is, it works too well, you know, cut my grass too much, do you want some extra tomatoes or zucchinis, because it really helps your garden. Uh, and so lastly, just wanna say thank you for being a member of the Solid Waste Agency, understanding that we can do, uh, just to go over that, let us know and we'll try and do it.
Council, I have some questions, but I have one, on, uh, the Mount Trashmore, is there any, um, uh, future plans to ever build anything on top of that for a chance? Or is it as high as it's ever gonna be?
It's as high as it's gonna be, uh, and actually, it'll settle, like that's the, the overlook that's on top of it now, it was the reason it took longer, we had it open last fall, but, uh, they had to redo the footings a couple of times, we had to get it adjusted right, because they know that over the next thirty years, it could probably settle anywhere from ten to twenty feet. Especially because all the debris on top is from the floods of oh-eight, so it's really heavy, you know, the sink, but repacking plants in there, so that's gonna compress all that stuff down, and as the gases, all that comes out, it's gonna settle. So, the, that's gonna be the only probably structure that we have on top of it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're really, really excited, I just got, I saw rendering today of the, of the trail system that came in, and that's, that's gonna be really cool. I think for, between the walking and then the mountain bike and the floor trail and stuff like that, it's gonna be, uh, I think a pretty big destination for folks down there.
Real quickly, we put a microwave shot across that, but prior to the floods.
Uh-huh.
And because they opened it back up and let it get higher.
Yeah.
We had to move our microwave higher off one of our towers.
Really?
So, don't put any more on it.
No, no, it's elevation nine forty-eight right now, and, uh, yeah, well, come back through ten years, which I hope I am, I can tell you, alright, it's elevation nine forty-eight.
Yeah, okay. Uh, other questions? Well, thank you for coming, that's very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, item thirteen B, uh, review liquor license, dram shop permit for, um, Folders Pub and Grub Incorporated and approved, so.
I'm Lisa Fuller, thirty-five forty auto road in Hoggville, this is my husband Al.
We talked earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
We are purchasing Mahoneys and our possession date should be May first. It might be the thirtieth of this month, but potentially it's May first. We have applied for our liquor license, we are trying to clean a few things up to be able to get insurance. Um, the fire suppression system has to be checked and we're kind of going back and forth with Jason, trying to figure out when the last date was, when it was purged, all of that with Hoff Eye. Once we get that done, we have our insurance, and I'm going through Neighbor Insurance, they carry everything of ours, but I've talked to Chris there, and she's got everything lined up and set up. There's just a few little peaks right there that we need to get finalized for the insurance company, so then we'll have that covered. So we are asking for you to grant us our license for our liquor permit.
Okay.
One more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When I was applying for the liquor permit, I went ahead and I applied for the outdoor license. Use it very often? No. Occasionally, yes, there's benefits or rides or whatever, Alvernet days, something to where we want to be able to serve alcohol right outside of the establishment, not across the street, not across the parking lot, but right outside of the front door. And what I remembered before I showed up here was that I was supposed to draw a little demonstration on where it would be, so I can't be like everybody else and hand them all out. So, everybody knows where Mahoneys is.
Yeah, I can, I can check it.
But it's really not hard, though, it's, you'll walk out going west out of the front door and just right here, right is where we would put the code, right against the building. If anybody was here, um, during Jason's benefit, it was right out there, right in front of the building, that is where we would do it.
Question, so Jason had not the permit? He had one?
Yes.
Correct?
Oh, yes, yes, all we are.
This isn't really anything new?
No, it's nothing.
Okay.
We're, we're just transferring everything over to us from him. So his is actually still current, and it can continue to be current, but it's a perfect, you know, the Mahoneys, and we started with that.
Okay, um, I have a couple questions.
I have answers.
Um, I think everybody in Alvernet's probably wondering if there's still gonna be chickens.
We have been asked that, yes, actually, nothing is going to change right away. And we're not gonna make big drastic changes, we're not rich, we can't do that. But little changes, we want to try to add some types of food, maybe a little healthier foods. We're open to, I know, right?
There's nothing in there that's like.
I know!
Water.
We're open to suggestions, comments, anything that would give us a little direction on really what people want.
There's still gonna be chicken for a while.
Still chicken, and we had tenderloins for the first time tonight there, and they are really good. Their cod is good normally, that's why they use the cod, but don't worry, we'll, you'll get your chicken.
Okay, um, in review of our city ordinance, it looks like new establishments do need council approval, if I read it correctly.
Yeah, it do need council approval, and I did prepare a resolution, Lori advised that we should probably do it by resolution to make it right, and the email did come in, you know, so, uh, as far as I can tell, everything's up to snout, so.
So, uh, after we get our questions, then we will be seeking a resolution from, uh, from council here to get this approved. Now, uh, I was unaware that you were seeking this portion of it, is this on the current one, uh, for approval, or is this something we're gonna have to do different?
Well, no, yeah, I, I made the resolution, so it included, because I took all the information off of the, the application from the Bureau of Alcohol, um, whatever that's called, ABD.
Right.
Anyway, yeah, yeah, so that's, and it's not uncommon, I think Mike says an outside permit too.
Yes.
And I think Jason has had, but when Jason bought Mahoneys, he didn't have to have a new permit, because he left it Mahoneys, it just got transferred over.
He did doing business as Mahoneys, that could be.
Yeah, well, I went back and looked, he didn't have to apply for a new one, he was just.
I will say though, whenever there is going to be an event, the reason I asked for the outdoor event on the liquor license is because I don't wanna have to go through them every time I would need to. However, when I know something's coming up, I will come to the city council meeting, and I will bring one of these, and I will tell you what is going to happen, why it's going to happen, and ask your permission to have this set up wherever we want it set up.
Well, the special events has other restrictions on it based upon the amount of people and things like that that are going on, the suggestion review that, that has nothing to do with, with this particular portion of it, yeah. This particular portion is still on your property, it doesn't get out into the public sidewalks or anything like that, you understand?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And we've, that's been confirmed, Guy?
Yes.
That, yeah, alright, that you're still on your property there, alright, very good. Questions from council?
Sir, resolution draft is there?
It's included in the package, it should be right here.
Guy's printing out the resolution draft right now. Was it in that stack that I gave you, Mayor, uh, of the stuff that maybe needed to be signed?
I thought I had it. Um, yes, yes it is, do you need it?
Yeah, I.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry, I thought everybody had one.
I'll just share that with Nancy, so you can, you can see it, but, uh, that's basically what I, I just took all the information straight off of the ABD website, um, stating that Alan Nancy Fuller will be doing businesses, Folders Pub and Grub Incorporated, and have applied to the city of Alvernet for pending dram sock, shop license, because that's what it is until they actually grant it. Um, uh, including outdoor service and Sunday sales. So those are two of the, of the, uh, the options outside of a regular license is outside sales and Sunday sales. So that's what your application said, so that's what I put in the resolution. Pretty much that simple.
Do you want further review on this, do you want to stay?
Do you want to see?
Yeah, that's the whole resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody else?
Yes, please.
Lori helped me, uh, she provided the resolution, I just changed it over to fit our needs, and that's what they use, um, that resolution that she sent me was actually Lebowski.
Well, we probably haven't done one.
Changed it all up.
Because they're all renewals for many, many years.
Yeah, because I was.
Probably one of our first new ones, I don't know how long it's been Mahoneys, I've been here for twenty-plus years and it's been Mahoneys.
Probably the last time we had a new one was, well, no, we did have a new one, I just thought of it, um, Lefty started selling, uh, liquor.
Alright.
And I didn't look, I didn't look down that path.
Yeah, I think we did. We did one down.
Yeah.
Uh, has anybody had an opportunity to look at this? Any other questions concerning this from council there? Intend a motion if somebody wants to move forward. Motion by Shans for approval?
Seconded by?
Seconded by Saracen, any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Your motion carries, good luck with your business.
Thank you very much, I like your tie.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be, uh, looking forward to chicken. I don't really go in there very much, but we do order out quite a little bit, so, uh, so we'll.
You're next.
And your healthier food, whatever that is. Alright, with that taken care of, we'll move on to thirteen C, a discussion of the new website. Uh, Mr. Evans is here, is that, yes, he is, he's here, and, uh, if possible, we can finish things up with this and, and get this approved.
Last time we had a little bit of a difficulty with it, running off his box, I decided to bring mine. I thought, uh, moving into my office, I was gonna get lucky and be able to borrow your guys' internet, but, uh, unfortunately, I'm way too far away, so I've been running it off my phone, so I'm running it off my phone at this point in time too. So this is the website I showed you guys last time, and what I wanted to do today is come back and talk a little about the email notifications that you wanted to, uh, discuss last time also. Just like last time, the gray is where images go, this is a slider unit, I've only put three temporary sliders up there, you can have five sliders up there if you want, all of them talking about new, different things. New, uh, businesses in Alvernet, new firehouse, real soon, hopefully. Anything you wanna talk about, so, I'll just kinda go real quick, just show you, this does automatically, since I just, uh, connected to the screen, it's not, uh, going automatic right now. In the backend, you guys know also from the, uh, there, just let's see, same thing, popular services, these can be changed to anything you want, these are just basically what municipalities have. So, I just went out again, I did some research, went out and looked at thirty towns from huge towns to small towns, and just put some stuff together. Images can be changed, uh, names can be changed, these are all become basically menu items, where you click on them, they'll go to another location where you have your information. Again, gray down here on the bottom is just for where images go, so if you had, you could say, you know, uh, let me see, let me move that one more. And this is another slider, and you can have images of the fire department, of the, the, you know, parks and recreation, the, any new, anything new that you guys are doing, or any kind of information that you wanna get out. You can just either just copy from other, again, I just copied other municipalities, kinda give you guys ideas of what you could do. Same thing here, gray just means an image, uh, last time I was here, we talked about, uh, reaching out to the, uh, public, that has lots of images, like you guys, like, I saw the fire, you guys had some really good fire images, last time I was here, I brought it up. Perfect images, sizes, you know, I can get you sizes that we need. images, sizes, I mean, I can get you sizes that we need. The ones on your current website are very, very small. I spoke about that, I couldn't even put them in here, because it would just blow it up and just distort it all over, so we just need some decent sized images, and I can cut an image and crop and do all that stuff myself to get it the right size for the website. Same thing again, just more area. You don't have to have all this area. You can have four things on here, you can have twenty things on the front pages, whatever you guys want. I added down here at the bottom what we were talking about. This is your mayor spot where we talked about again, too, along with the mayor. We talked about, we could also do council members, or we could have a separate page on council members, where you guys have your image, a little bio about you and stuff like that, so people know who you are. Just like last time, I threw that up, I just go into Wikipedia to find out the numbers. If it's wrong, you guys should let me know. Then down at the bottom, I threw a form in, and what I would like to do better is, uh, like on that one of the sliders, we said, get on the notification list. This is where your email list comes out, or however you want. I just put it subscriber, you know, subscribe emergency notification list. You can call it anything you want, anything you wanna type in, I mean, it's, it's all very customizable. When you fill out your information there, first name, it's mandatory, last name's mandatory, email's mandatory, they hit subscribe, it goes into the backend system, and what I've did is I pulled up the backend system here, and, uh, list of subscribers. Come on. And I'm the only one subscribed, because I've tested it, so.
Mike, while waiting on that, I have sent, um, a draft of what we, what I would put for pages and submenus and all that, so we are working-
So, you are working on content, then?
Working on that structure and-
That's awesome.
What we have today, how to make it fit, and what we, what I've seen that I like from other cities as well.
And that's the best part, is don't try to reinvent the wheel. Go out and see what you like. You know, we talked about this last time, about Hiawatha's events, notification stuff. This is the backend where, my phone's obviously not working well right now, but, this is where you would create your, your notifications. You could actually have templates created to where if you had a water template, or you had a burn template, don't burn because of, you know, whatever, then you could say, send them out to a different list, or you could send them out to one list, and somebody would have to physically log into the backend and say, send all subscribers this email, and then that, just two clicks, and it would be done. You guys would prehave, you'd have your templates already created, though.
Where does that come from? Does that look like it's coming from an Albernette district?
Well, like we talked about before, yes, it will become whatever you wanna call it, because I'll, all, all your emails will get the emails, you know, mayor or first name at albernettecst, you know, or cst, albernetteiowa.org. Or, uh, notifications, emergency, whatever, it will come from your domain, so it won't be coming from a Gmail account. So, yeah, my phone's dying. Let's go back over here. So, this is the basic settings, like when they first login, or when they first subscribe. This is where you can customize the email they get. When they submitted their name, you're gonna get, just like any other email list, you, when you submit your email address, you get some kind of response back saying, hey, thanks for joining, or this is what to expect from this email list, and you can have twenty email lists, you can have a hundred email lists. I recommend no more than one or two, that way you guys have like an all-inclusive, and maybe you have an emergency one, I don't know, but, you know, I was talking to somebody this week about how many emails we think the city about, you know, how many people here actually have email, how many people actually have smartphones. I mean, that's, that's kind of a tough deal, because we're an older community, so, I, I mean, I don't know if you guys have those numbers. And I know us young guys have smartphones and, you know, all that stuff, so, but everything's very programmable, that's what I wanna share right here. I mean, it's, you just delete it and type your own thing in, or, you know, I'm not gonna say this, I wouldn't be there for the thing, but, uh, in the backend, once you guys, uh, if you decide to move forward, I'll give you full training on this, show you guys how to do it. I'll go out and find templates for you guys, what other cities do, and we'll, and we'll just customize or modify, so.
Plain text or rich text?
Uh, this, this comes out as HTML to the email, so.
So, it can be programmed in that way?
Yeah, you can, you can do anything, yeah, any HTML you want, you can do, that's correct. Colors, images, whatever you want. Bold, red. Again, this is just the temporary one of when you first log on, but there are other lists. Where am I at here? Why this is not, uh... Shows I got signal.
It's spotty back there. Just get on the wifi, so that you can finish showing them.
As far as pages, are we limited as to how many pages we can add to it?
No, it's, you can have as many pages as you want, but you don't want it to be over cumbersome to the individual. You wanna have them, you know, two clicks, three clicks, and be at the information they want, so that's something to keep in the back of your mind. I mean, no, we can-
Well, I mean, if we wanted to put, you know, the fire department's page on there, it's up to the chief, but, or if we wanted to add a page for benefit days, or-
Yeah.
Things like that.
That's, I actually created, uh, there's an events calendar on here, too, so instead of like the old website we talked about, you guys had just one page for Albernette Days, and I think it's still on there. Here, you could have an events page where you could actually have all your events for thirty days of that month, and even go on six months, like when the street was closed. You could add that on the calendar two months ahead of time, so people could see what was going on.
But other than the basic structure, once it's built, once we, you know, some of that may require your expertise. Is that included, or is that gonna-
Everything, yeah, I'm here forever, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, it's, this has, we, this is a basic website. We have, I have a basic website charge, and I have a hosting charge, and, and just like I do with everybody else and my customers, I help you guys until you're blue in your face, or you tell me to get out, so. So, these are your welcome emails, post notifications, so it is working now, so for some reason. And you just can create, again, just anything you want, anything you can think about, you can create on the backend of this. It's very customizable, very, uh, open to anything that you guys wanna do, so. And email lists, again, are gonna be, you know, important. How do you guys wanna collect your emails? Do you wanna, you know, just about your water bills? Do you wanna say something about, hey, join our notification list? However you wanna get the word out, that's, you know, Albernette Days, that would be a great one to have some, somebody out there taking, you know, say, hey, sign up here, that way half the town's in town, you know, stuff like that, so. You guys have any other questions?
I would like to see this done as soon as possible. If we aggressively, uh, if we approve, or the council approves, and we aggressively provide the information and content that you need, how quickly do you think we could get this out?
The hardest part was building the framework. I think I had about ten hours in that already. The easy part's you guys give me content, so it's copy and paste, and what I would, what I would wanna do is while I'm copying and pasting, work with one of you guys, whoever wants to, you know, become the person, then I will show them exactly how we're doing everything. That way, there, because there may be a time where you wanna change something, and I'm not available, and you just go do it, you know? That way it's easy. And this is a WordPress backend framework, so it's, if you guys ever get into WordPress, it's super simple. Just building the framework on the frontend is the hardest part, then everything else on the backend's easy.
So, Mayor, we'll say, I spent a lot of time looking at the communities around us, and this is by far, I mean, it looks great, like, even with the gray space and the fillers and the space.
I just, again, I did spend ten hours before I came in here that, that first time, and when you, when I left, I immediately went out and looked at mail programs, and then added to the mail program, too.
That reminds me, where are we gonna be at cost-wise, because that's taking, that's gonna cost more, right? So, where are we at?
It's, I, it's, I'll give you the same price I told you before, how's that sound? So, basic website, my cost is a thousand dollars to create, and then there's a month, a monthly hosting fee of a hundred dollars a month, so that's where you're at still, and I won't rate, charge you guys anymore.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm very happy with it. I'd like to get it done as soon as possible. I know Chester wants to get in and start programming HTML.
Don't worry about HTML, worry about CSS. Right. Again, the hardest part is getting content, so you guys supply content, you know, uh, that's, that's the hardest part, is your end of the work. My end of the work is just about done.
Uh, I, I think there's folks on the council that could certainly handle updating content of their own pages or stuff like that. I think Bethany's probably got the most aptitude for it, but that's gonna be up to the council, aren't you? So, questions from the council?
I think you guys got Josh due now, trust me.
I can use that program.
Anything else for me? I mean, you guys just tell me when, and we can just, we'll start dates. I actually just moved in next door. Uh, I tried to be there every day at one to five yesterday. I had an appointment today. I, I thought I wasn't gonna be there, because two hours ago, I was on Highway thirty with a blown front tire, so, uh...
Well, if, uh, I'll make a suggestion that we approve, of course, with a motion from one of you folks, but with maybe Bethany in the lead, in conjunction with any council member that wants to work on it or provide content, and with, um, acting clerk, Trinble, also with the Ministry of Access and kinda overseeing the project on the full-time side.
This will have a two-factor authentication to actually log in, so, uh, I would recommend a smartphone. You don't have to have, because I, on the backend, I can have it call you to, to approve. Basically, you, you can't hack these sites. I put, have overdue. My background, I was lead information security guy at Aegon for ten years, so you can't hack my sites, and so you'll, you guys will figure out. Sometimes you'll be really mad, because it takes five minutes to get into the site, so.
Josh, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
We're gonna need a lot of imagery, and as Mike said, we don't have it today. It's more than going out with a cellphone and white and shoot. Anything, students, I mean, is there photography focus that-
There's, there's not, but there's certainly some, I know that, uh, a couple of months ago, our, our fabric came over, and, uh, I know that we have some, we have some kids interested in titering ours, so let me talk with our, uh, our teacher, who's a retired fabric kid, and see if we can get some images of the town and kids and things like that, that-
And I can start making a list of, kind of, I think that's-
What about historical society, too? Would that be any benefit? I don't know.
They may have some things of, you know, if we want some pictures of-
Older stuff.
Older stuff, too, or, you know, something like what's up to them.
I didn't, I looked at it.
It was just unfortunate, right?
Absolutely, I think that would be a good, uh, I, with six hundred some kids, and you can find somebody that's kinda passionate about it.
Man, I know we've got local photographers in town, but I think it's a great opportunity. Nothing extremely technical, but we definitely need, you know, high-res, good quality photos.
And the easy part is, is if we do get some of those, these are best for my to-do most days, so we can get them to-
Yeah, I'm usually at the school during the day, so it'd be natural. Two, three days a week, and then, yeah, I hear, so.
Yep.
Okay, I'll start on a list of images I can-
And I do have a lot of experience with this type of, this website, of course, but our website is also a WordPress site, so, um, it really is, you and Chester, we can get you there.
The only thing I would ever suggest, any, doing any type of, and I don't know if you do this or not, is before you type things, put it in a text pad, then copy from the text pad into there. That way you get no carriage of things like a Word document. Don't, don't do any copying from a Word document, Excel, stuff like that. Go to a text in there, yeah. Yeah, because there'll be some tags and stuff in there, will be screwed up, but I'll, I'll show you guys all that.
Did you have a comment?
If you're interested in any pictures from any of the past Albernette Children's Benefit Days, I have a lot of pictures. The chicken catch, the horseshoes, the parade, the human foosball thing they had out there last year. I, I, if you're interested in any of those-
I can't think of her name. It evades me, she's on my Facebook. Takes all the pictures at this fortunate event.
Susan Muir?
Yeah.
I'll chat with her, too, that'd be good. She'll have lots of.
That's on tape now, she's just gonna watch it and know that I forgot her name. I'll be offended in an hour. All right, all right, other comments?
Looks great. You guys have my information, just, when, when you guys are ready, I'm ready, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Entertained a motion if you, if, uh, we're together on this, if, uh-
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We entered an agreement with Mr. Evans on the, um, new city website.
I'll say it. Okay, so, uh, motion by Menzen, uh, second by Henderson. Any other discussion on that? And that is for the proposed price, as discussed earlier, so, yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Congratulations, thank you. We'll try to get this going as soon as possible, but then you're gonna take the lead on that, and you keep it updated on the timeframe. All right, very good, thank you.
Bye, guys. Thank you very much.
Mobile marketing.
Okay.
Mobile marketing.
Yep.
I'll shoot you an email.
What was, uh, you said, May first was the estimated time? Yeah, May first, all right, thank you. All right, item thirteen, the discussion of library contract for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, and a possible motion on that. Clerk, go ahead.
It's more or less the same as always, except the price continues to go up, so, um, we've been had this contract for, I think the previous one was five years as well, and, and, uh, I know there's discussion about the cost and how much the citizens of Albernette use the libraries in Hiawatha, Marion, and Cedar Rapids. There's really no negotiating. It's as simple, we either do it or we don't, and if we don't, the people that do use those libraries won't have access.
They won't have access, well, they'll have to pay for access.
Well, they'll have to pay for access, I should say it that way, yes. The lady from the library contacted me by phone before she emailed this out. Um, just wanted to, uh, uh, forewarn that it was coming, and that, yes, the rate would be going up. I didn't, I couldn't find, I shouldn't say I didn't, I tried to, but I couldn't find what last year's payment was.
Just a second, I'll get it for you here.
Yeah, 'cause I forgot to ask Lori to dig it out for me when she was here.
Do you think they have the numbers of how many people actually use this?
I've talked with her a little bit about that, and that's hard to determine, because they don't necessarily have to, you know, put their, I don't know that they have a way of tracking, even if they, they enter the system as an Albernette resident, resident, I don't know if they track when that card is, is used, you know? I, I asked her, I said, do you know how many people we have coming? Oh, I don't, I don't think this lady was in that department that called me, so I suppose we could-
Guy, do you have any idea? Right here shows that we paid seven thousand dollars this year.
I, that's, it's always broke up into at least two payments, though.
True, is it? And so, then we still have seven thousand, because we budgeted fourteen thousand, five hundred.
Yep.
And it'd be kinda nice to know if this-
If we've made the second payment, or when it's due.
Or when it's due, or-
Yep.
Is this part of this eighteen, nineteen thing, or?
Yeah, I believe we did apply your contract before, because I remember doing this.
Maybe it was a one-year.
Yeah, these were annual before. I'm not saying a five-year's not beneficial based upon discounts. I'm just, um, remember doing this annually before.
Right.
But if that's the case, if we budgeted fourteen-five, that's a five thousand dollar increase, you know, going into the next year.
Well, I was assuming we budgeted the same amount. I haven't got that eighteen, nineteen budget-
Yeah.
-to look at, but according to this, we still have seven thousand dollars left over this past budget year.
But we still have a lot of fiscal year left, too. We, that payment may be due in May or June. I, I don't know that information. I don't know how to find that out either. Lori probably would be able to-
Well, right here, it says July thirty-one, October thirty-one, January thirty-one, and April thirtieth, so, end of the month.
Under the new contract.
Right. It might be the same cadence, we might be getting another one end of the month.
They're gonna say, too, that our, our dispersment is based on percentage of total circulation to Albernette residents, so they must be able to track that somehow.
Yeah, and it must be going, well, I shouldn't say that. I shouldn't say it's, the usage is going up, it just might be their rate per use is going up, um, yeah.
Well, that's a, it's a five-year contract with a five-year escalation as well, so.
Yeah, and it does escalate, too, so.
It's kinda late for us to do anything on our budget for eighteen, or eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, because if we did leave, let's see, can I get my hands on that? If we did just budget fourteen-five for the library, obviously, we'd be five thousand dollars short.
Maybe if we beg ignorance on this, they'd let us off, too.
No, I will say, I mean, this is a lot cheaper than retaining our own library.
Absolutely. Yes, I am complaining about the cost, but-
Yeah. I have a coworker on the Schelsberg Library Board, and I know that it's substantial.
And that is a, a constant source of, of angst with cities, especially the ones that are a little bit more remote, that don't have a close drive to a library, and it's, it's a big deal. It gets talked about a lot on clerknet, you know, what do you pay your library, librarian, what do you pay their assistants? How, how do you maintain, you know, this? Where do you fund it from? And, and the numbers are quite staggering. There is no, no way we could provide library services for this amount of money. No. No.
And just looking at that quickly, I don't see language in there where we can exit out of it, out, out on an annual basis. Would you think they would let us do it on a five year contract renewal, auto renewing once a year to where if we didn't like it in the next year, we could just drop off?
All I could, all I could do is, is call them and find out. I mean, that is, that's, at this point, that's all I can do. I don't know. This just got thrown out there and said, please put this in front of your council for consideration, so I'll have to make a call.
Item number two, since we have, it's a thirty day.
Oh, for exiting?
Yeah.
But there's no auto renew clause in here?
That I didn't see.
So we just take it and then we gotta pick one out, we gotta.
You can get out, yeah.
They said they actually issued a refund.
I'm gonna guess that they, yeah, that they re, they are taking a different approach, allowing the opt out rather than doing one year contracts all the time if we want to stay in it.
Good. Well. Other discussion, pleasure to the council on this.
I think it's an important resource. It's actually something I highlighted as part of the new website design, because a lot of people don't know we have access. And so I think if we bring more attention to that, then we can increase usage as well.
I would say with having so many nice libraries within ten miles or fifteen miles of us, there is no way this town can support one on its own. I mean, I know that's a lot of money, but really that's about a thousand books is all. And you can't, you know, we'd never be able to buy a thousand books.
I don't think we could buy any cheaper any other way.
And have the choice of three.
Yeah, I mean, and they're nice. I mean, and I'll just speak from, we use it quite a bit, especially in summer as a family. And so, not that I wouldn't pay if it went away, because we would, it just is, it is a nice service to have.
Oh, you got three options too.
And I like to use the internet downloads from that, which is something we would never, probably wouldn't do here, so. It's good service.
I'm not a fan of the price, but I do like this service. Well, it sounds like everybody's relatively in favor. Do we have a motion on this or approval then, on a five year?
Yeah. If it gives us the opt out in case something changes, I'd, I'd say that's pretty.
I would move that we accept the library contract as presented.
All right, motion by Sarason. Second by Trump. All those in, I don't think there's any more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is the discussion and possible purchase of a property adjacent in the green space. This is an update.
Yeah, nothing new to report, except we did hire George Davis. He's an appraiser. After some research, it, it was quite reasonable. He was willing to do the appraisal for five hundred dollars. The other bids were near two thousand, fifteen hundred to two thousand, so. And from what I understand, he's quite good at what he does, so just waiting for that to get back. And then soon as we get that, we can put in front of you. I don't think there's anything else to discuss beyond that. Chester and I did have a, a discussion that there's funds in the fire department fund that we could use to purchase this land, because that would, in essence, be part of the, you know, making sure we get that fire and then we can move, we can always transfer funds from our, from our equipment fund back to the fire department later on, but for right now, that would be probably the best place to, to take the funds if we do decide to, to do a purchase on the property. Or we'll, or we'll look at that closer, you know, when it, it gets to that point, if it gets to that point. But, and the only other thing on that is the attorney was not real, really in favor of trying to get a construction easement from Rex to do dirt work on that piece of property. Because I expect as soon as this weather turns, Jeremy's gonna be in there to do dirt work. So he just was worried that there could be some long lasting effects, so we'll just try and stay off of that property and grade appropriately, so that it, we're not having to redo a lot of dirt work if we wind up purchasing it. So I'll try and, you know, just do the best we can, I guess. But basically, we just need to see that appraisal at this point, so.
This appraisal at five hundred, that's well within your purchasing realm. Were you seeking a motion for that?
No, no, I just told him to do it. So I, I figured it was within, within my limits, so I told him to do it. When I heard, you know, if it was gonna be two thousand, we would have had that.
Okay.
Had to do something different.
Questions on the update then, from anyone, where we're at with that?
Josh, do you know what green space we're running?
Yep.
Trying to purchase.
Yep.
It'll cut slightly into your backyard. We're gonna need about half your backyard.
I want the kids to be able to use your bathroom.
Yeah.
They do, so.
That ought to work out good.
I do have a question, Mr. Ray. On, on the grade out there, Guy.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're not gonna pursue the construction easement, how are we grading out? Is it gonna be pretty flat where you're not concerned or?
I think it'll be all right. I went out.
Are we gonna give him a cliff on the other side?
No, I think we'll be okay. I went out and looked at it after, after Brian said maybe he was concerned and I think it'll be okay. I mean, they're not using that for anything. John Parks' truck's there at harvest time or Parks' tractor and planter there in springtime. That's about all it gets used for. So even if we create a little bit of a problem in the short term, Brian felt like it was better to, to do that than to, you know, tread on that property, even though it should improve it. And then the sale not go through and then, you know, then we have this long term situation we have to deal with. You know, if, if people get angry and, and don't like what happened, even though he granted the easement, he still could have some rights as far as.
We're, we're not gonna do anything that would be cost a lot of money to fix.
No.
Five years from now.
Yeah, no. Yeah, right, right, right. Yeah, I just, it's just so flat through there that it's not gonna be a big deal.
We're just building up, is what we're.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing that thought process that came through too was if we can get that purchase, rather than putting the fire station farther out, closer to the wellhouse, maybe it would be better served if it was closer to that end, because you could access the front and back, you know, from the stub of Willow. And then that driveway that's already in, that is a wide driveway close to your lot. Instead of, and it might eliminate us having to do this monster driveway that the engineer wants us to do farther, closer to the wellhouse. So something to think about there too, if we can get purchased. That, that just got hashed out in the last day or so. So somebody brought it up. So anyway, that's where we're at, waiting for appraisal.
All right, item F, discuss update, building permit fee schedule and possible motion.
The building permits have been popping lately. There's gonna be probably at least three new houses built. Got some other remodeling going on. It's been a frustration point trying to figure out where all the building permits were stored, how we're using our fee schedule. And Vince and Lori have both been bemoaning the fact that ours hasn't been updated. Our codes have not been updated in forever. And Robbins has just updated all of theirs, including their fees, which they're, the fees are not really that much different. It's more about how they're going about collecting the fees for, for what things. For example, we don't collect a fee for a mechanical permit. I just had a call today from someone's gonna come do a furnace. They are absolutely used to, in every town that they work in, having to have a permit to swap out a furnace. We don't have that in our code. And it's just a little bit difficult to come to a permit fee schedule off of the schedule that we have. And so my proposal, if we're gonna continue our relationship with Robbins and using Vince as our building inspector, would be to update our code to match Robbins. And then it's seamless. If he, you know, if we get a call, I can refer him to Vince. He does it exactly like they would do it in Robbins and it's just done. He doesn't have to flip to our code. And also, we would be up to current code instead of having an old one that's in need of, of updating. So to be quite honest with you, having never done this, I don't know if we have to have that spelled out. If we, if you're willing to do it, if we just need a motion to move ahead. And then the formal changeover would come at the next meeting. I'm at a loss. I didn't have time to prepare for this. It just got brought up last week.
Fee structures are gonna change and have to go through a full process and readings.
They have to be readings, yes.
The other thing is, on code changes, we have other changes that need to be made in our city code that we're behind on anyway. I wonder if we should try to do that at the same time. What's the urgency on this?
It, it's, it's not high urgency. We're figuring it out, but it, it really should be taken care of. If we're gonna have, if we are gonna have a boom of new houses, we probably better get this in place. It just makes sense.
It may be easier to update this section of the code, because you're going through the whole reclassification. This would be a pretty complicated time consuming process.
And I don't wanna make Vince have to know two different sets.
Right.
Are they completed in Robbins?
Yeah, they're done. So I, if, if you guys wanna move ahead, I can just, they, they're more than willing to help. Because it's confusing them too, because they've been trying to help me figure out how to do these permits as they roll in and it's just, it's apples and oranges, so.
It'd be nice to have something to see what kind of fee structure you have, what you're getting charged for before you go too far in here. And what some of the major changes in the, the code update would be. So we're, just so we're kind of aware of what's going on.
Yep. Yep.
Have you guys adopted the latest building code? I think we're two years behind on that.
Yeah. That's what I'm referring to. Yeah, that, that's part of it.
We'll need to know the fee changes. We'll need to post those that'll require, I mean, we can waive it all down to one, I suppose, but harsh to the public.
I can, I can get everything together for next meeting so that you can make an actual motion to do the update and let that be your first reading. And if you wanted to waive one of them, we could have it in place by the June meeting, you know. And, but at least you'd have something to look at. This kind of all came around as permits were flying over the last week and a half, so there just was no time to put together.
Yeah.
I'm thinking correctly, if I would say that all those fees are listed in our, as part of our code.
They are. They're there, yes, but it's just enough different from Robbins that it makes it a, a real struggle.
I understand, but, but they are listed in the.
Yep, yep.
That's what I thought.
Yep, and, um, having never issued one before, I've been playing real big catch up trying to, you know, we had crew come in and, and roof a house and a garage and put siding on the side and only from, first of all, we caught them without a permit and said, what are you doing? Oh, I'm just putting a roof on. And so we charged them fifty bucks for the, for the building permit to put a roof on a, a single car garage. And then I dragged by later and it's, they fully sided the entire building, put some window, a couple of windows in and put a roof on the house, too. You know, small house, small rental house, but, you know, it's like, at this point, I can't hardly go back and say, hey.
Sure.
You know, but I went off the information I had at the time and that's, it's not that, and it's not even so much a matter that we're missing out on money. It's the whole inspection part of it that we need to be up to date on, you know, to make sure the building codes are being followed, you know.
And they need to be updated and placed somewhere. I know a lot of the times these construction companies, they incorporate the fee directly into your, your bid. And they get a lot of that from the web or working directly with it, but we need to get them updated and put out there. I understand.
And it'd be one thing that we could put on ours, too.
Sure.
Absolutely.
And that makes it a lot easier for those construction. The homeowners sometimes don't even see it into the bid if they don't look closely that they were charged for that, those particular items, so.
Yep, I will get it together for next time, complete the code updates and the fee schedule.
Is there, what happens if they don't get a permit?
Well, I've caught three people already this year.
Charged with, did they find or how does that work?
No, just. Yeah. Well, I.
I'm just wondering what, is there a fine or what is this?
It's double in Cedar Rapids and charge double the permit.
I haven't, we've got a municipal infraction code in the, but I haven't
Sure.
looked through it, but what I usually do, and it happens every summer, especially roofing crews, they'll show up in, in Alvernet and start on a roof and there'll be fifteen guys on the roof, you know, and I'll drive by and it's like, oh crap, you guys have a permit? Nope. Everybody's out. And they're like, oh, we'll get one, we'll get one. No. Everybody on the ground.
I'm confident you're, you're gonna get it.
Yeah, right. So, so that's how I handle that. Some of these construction companies don't, there was a lady putting new windows and doors in her house. We caught the crew working. I called her and I said, hey, you need a permit for that. Well, my contractor said I didn't. Well, who, who do you suppose would know? The city or the? Well, they said they checked with the county and the county said they didn't need one. Where do you live? Well, I live in Alvernet. Well, where do you suppose you should have started this process? Where do you think they should have started this? So that's what I get, you know, everybody.
Well, it's not an outrageous fee, you know.
No.
It's just a, an idea so we know what's going on and for safety, so.
Exactly. And that's what people don't understand either with building permits. They just think it's a way to soak them for money. And in reality, it's to make sure that their house doesn't fall down after they get done making it or start on fire or whatever. Okay.
All right, very good. Other questions on that, Andy?
Just real quick, we talked about, sorry, the code, other codes that you, do we have like a code review schedule or policy review schedule where you review certain?
Yeah.
Each year you do different ones and so then you always have?
Anyone, anyone can answer this, but you can look at them completely. But, you know, a lot of the different codes affect another code within there, so it's not like you can just go in and do them piecemeal. You kind of gotta look at them across the board because they're interranged with each other. But we have had some changes even in my time on the council, where we've increased fees or done different things, added things that need to go out and get that updated. I think Councilman Sarason brought it up that it would be nice to get them out of that PDF format and in a database format on the new website where they're easier to search or manipulate. And then that linking would be easier to do, because in the PDF format, it's hard to go in and completely just make a simple change on them. We ran across this actually with your, your position when we were getting ready to post that. Our code referred to information that was not consistent with the state code. State code may have changed, it was newer than what our code had. And we kind of ran into that little dichotomy there between the two of which one was, we were gonna end up using. And I had to get our city attorney involved and stuff like that, but. Like Councilman Trump said, it can be an expensive endeavor to completely redo it.
We went through it, do you remember Joe, almost about five, six years ago? We spent over twenty thousand dollars.
Wow.
To get it done. We went through this Hyla municipality.
ECO.
ECO thing. So at the time it was done, it matched everybody's, they were all. But, you know, as time goes by.
Right, of course.
Things change.
Thanks. All right, we're up to item G, discuss purchasing billing permit from the data tech.
That goes hand in hand with this discussion of the codes and ordinances. If we buy this mod, they call it a module, if we buy this to go on our data tech software, basically when you, all the fees get built into the software. And so when they tell you what they're doing, you plug it in, it generates reports and it tracks it for you. It gives you places to put the inspections. Right now, all we have is a, a written fee schedule and we just write out the, the permit. They fill out the application, you write them a permit and it lays there in the file and there's no, you gotta remember or, you know, set up a schedule for yourself to check in and see, are these inspections being done? Have they paid the permit, et cetera, et cetera? Robbins has the module and they love it. You know, that's why they're having such a heck of a time with our system, because they, it's like, it does this for us, you know, that's, that's their thing. So now's the appropriate time to talk about that. If we wanna do something like that, if we're gonna go to a new fee schedule and update all of our codes, then it would go hand in hand with adding that, the module to our software to handle those permits. Love to think that town's growing. Obviously, there's still plenty of lots for sale, more and more building permits. And if we get some more expansion, I just felt like it might be worth while, so. I think the stuff that I sent out pretty much explained where we're at. Total cost of twenty two sixty, half, half at a time, eleven thirty per payment. And they will do the training, of course, as they always do.
Oh, that's, that's one time, right? That looks like implementation.
Yes, right.
Forty two sixty and then a hundred and fifty annually.
Yes, right. A hundred and fifty annual cost, but it's just the one time getting the software and installed and, and training.
Yours is three hundred annually, a hundred fifty for licensing and support.
And might be.
That looks like me.
Yeah, I think it would be three hundred. I, we haven't, I don't know, I just don't have enough background. I don't know what we pay for the rest of our support for data tech. Chester, do you remember coming? Chester, do you remember how much that cost? Oh, right, 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 right. It's hard to quantify a number.
Call them, ask them.
Yeah, we'll do. Yeah, absolutely.
So if approved, is that something you need done in van- in advance of this?
I don't think it's that quick, let's wait until we now, you know, we want more information on the codes and the, and the fees, let's just table that and, and deal with that after we get the, the codes and fees in place, 'cause that's when it should really take, if we're gonna do it, that's when we should implement it, is when we have the new numbers, there's no reason to put our old fee schedule and our old, old codes into that and then have to change them, so, and it's not like it's a item that you have to wait to get, you know, if we call them up and say, "We're gonna get it, it's gonna be there".
Yeah, it's at six to ten hours here.
Exactly.
I will say I support this, I think there's no reason we should be working with paper forms, which is not even a straightforward form to begin with. I looked at it as part of incorporating it into the website as an online, there's just no way, so.
Well, plus, you could always track it.
Yeah.
You could look back five years and see, as it is now, like, I guess, my, and eight hours later, you might find it.
Well, and I know we're not talking about it being a huge source of revenue, but that's another tracking piece that's important.
Yeah, it was a struggle, that first new house application that came in, getting to the right fee, and then he was not nice about it, 'cause evidently we're higher priced than Cedar Rapids, like, permits are always cheaper than Cedar Rapids, so I had to deal with that, but.
Tell them ours is better.
Whatever, you're coming to a better town, buddy. No problem.
Alright, well, then we'll hold that table for now, item H, discuss the rekeying of all city locks and possible motion, uh, this is an issue of key control plus, uh, rekeying.
Yeah, Councilman Menzen actually brought it up.
Just something I thought of with, uh, especially the wellhouses, who, who knows how many people have keys in those wellhouses in our water supply? It's simple housekeeping, and I have no idea what it would cost.
I, I talked to John's locking key today, and I sent her some pictures of our keys and, and locks, that I'd held, held the key up that unlocked the lock, so she could see it, and, um, with replacing complete handsets on a couple of doors, and then otherwise, I couldn't see the point in having separate keys for the separate entrances, because if you're gonna lose a set of keys, you're gonna give them the entire set of keys anyway, so it might, and a lot of these locks might as well be key to light. And so, she, just from what I told her, thought it would be under five hundred dollars to, to do everything, except this door, because we don't own this building, so we would just work with Gary, and that'd have to be a, a separate situation, and I, that is the one thing that I don't think I would like key to light, I, in my opinion, city halls should be separate from the rest of the structures. All of our, our city-owned utilities can be on one key, but I think this one should be different. But we can talk with Gary about putting the most appropriate lock in this door for what we're doing here, um.
We key our facility with a, the AN key is the master key, it opens every lock, the A one, A two, A three listed on there opens the individual ones, but there is a master key that can open everything, I'm saying we have to do it that way, the master key is under key control, uh, but it can open every door everywhere, people don't get, only that's a controlled key, and then the A one through whatever is the individual locks all the way around, now, it's, that master is, has its use, um, but something to consider for keying that way. The individual locks, um, I would agree that this probably is not only just good housekeeping, and we need to do better key control, we, people need to sign for their keys, and they need to be turned in when they're done, and with the understanding on the key control, that if you don't turn in your key when you're done with your time, you'll be paying for the re-locking, um, but the, um, I don't know when the keys, when things were rekeyed in the city, does someone have a guess, I guess it's been many, many years?
Guy, did you, you know, we talked about this some time ago, did you actually switch the locks around?
Uh, switch?
Take the different locks, put them different places?
No.
Yeah, so that never happened?
No, 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 and the other part of this equation too is the, the door handle lock at the shop, something happened inside, it won't, it, it's stuck. We're, we're using the deadbolt, but we didn't used to use the deadbolt, we just used the, the lock on the handle, but that's unusable, it's, it's still locking with the, with the deadbolt, but.
So a lot of these can just be rekeyed, and a few others can be used.
Like all the chlorine rooms that were done in oh-nine, those are, those are key to light anyway, and those are industrial doors, they are not, you know, any kind of residential lock whatsoever, they would basically base the rest of them off of those, 'cause those are easily rekeyed, not saying that you wouldn't have to put new cylinder, or tumbler cylinders, whatever they call them, in some of those, 'cause they may be shot, or they, it may take a, she was talking about different keypads, you know, if it's a, if it's a different key path, basically, which I don't think any of them are, I think all these keys will slide into all these locks, they just won't open them if it's the wrong key, you know, but the, the door on the full shed's gonna be replaced soon as Brett gets up there and starts working, so, that old door and old locks that might as well be pitched in the garbage, and we'll put a new one in there, the one on the shop is not functioning, that needs to be a new one. Um, the three chlorine doors are all good industrial locks, so they can be reused, and then all that's left is the lift station, and that appears to be in good working order, so they should be able to, to rekey that one to match, so. And I already did the, I threw away every padlock that we owned here a year and a half ago, and ordered new key to light padlocks, uh, down at, uh, Campbell's Supply, so now the padlocks are all on the same page and a, and a new key that no one has, I mean, there's one in that desk, and one in my pocket, and one on John's key ring, that's all there is for padlocks, so.
Well, I would suggest we do it and do it as quickly as possible, fair market value, even though we don't have a price.
I think it should've been done ten years ago.
Yeah, probably. It, it, after you mentioned it, it got amplified, because I ran into Dave Wood, and we were just talking about the fact that he would love to come and help if, if, uh, if I ever needed it, even though he's not on council anymore, and he said, "I, I think I still have a set of keys around somewhere", and I know for a fact Sharon told me that he's lost two sets, if he, if he has one yet, it's number three, so.
Then these keys would be the non-copying keys.
I, I can make it that way, we didn't have that conversation, but I can.
That way, you, you sign for a key, you better turn that key back in, that's why I have to do it over.
Okay. So do we need a motion for me to go ahead, or if it's gonna be under five hundred, just?
Well, I don't know what the cost is gonna be, I would, I, I think a motion's in order for it, yeah, I think that's in order. Just as long as it's done at fair market value, yeah, sure. Yeah, I think a motion's in order, you just mentioned, okay, motion by Sean, second by Trump, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no, motion carries, thank you. Alright, last item here is an update on the hiring of the city clerk process, uh, that process, um, previously I'd, uh, put some of that stuff together and, and, and received that, just because of the urgency of it, but it's now, everything's going through, uh, city hall, I wanted to tell Guy thank you for that, I know it adds another level of, uh, work for you to receive all that and sort it, but, um, that being said, if you could give us just a quick update on where that's at, you don't have to go into great detail, but I, I know the council probably like a little.
We have about, uh, twenty-five applicants, almost everything has come off of Indeed so far, we did advertise in, on ClerkNet, uh, the IRWA website, which is a, uh, organization that we, uh, belong to, and IAMU, Iowa Municipal Utilities website, um, they both have classified sections, so that hits just, you know, city workers, wastewater, water wastewater clerks, that kind of thing. Um, we've gotten two that came in just from viewing our website, so I don't know if either of them came from one of those other websites we advertised on or not, but there's twenty-five, and, um, I've reviewed all of them so far, and, and there are some candidates, there's, um, there's definitely some garbage like we had before that are, will be easy to weed out, but, um, uh, so far, no one with real clerk experience is the one downer, so, um, there's one person that has some township clerk experience from many years ago in a different state, and that's as close as we can, so, um, but we put the cutoff date is the sixteenth, Monday, um, so at that point, I'll get a copy to all of you, and we can start, or the committee, and we'll just start sorting.
Well, we'll get there, I do appreciate the extra work you've been doing, so, thank you so much, but, uh, questions on that process for Guy?
Uh, Josh did mention, when I talked to him earlier, that he's hired hundreds of people in his career, um, if, you know, you wanna add another one to the list, or if that's too many, he's, he told me he's willing, so.
Just, uh, obviously, I've looked at lots of resumes, a couple of letters, and not that I could be any better or worse than anybody else, I just had that, that experience throughout the last six or seven years, and we've hired probably thirty or forty people here in the previous, so, I mean, we just, it's a constant, it's not a revolving, but I don't want, it's seem like that, but there's just constant flow of people in and out every year, five, six, seven, sometimes ten to fifteen, so I've done that work, so if, if I can be of help, I certainly will be. And that goes, I mean, that's from, from, you know, secretaries all the way through other principals, so.
Bring that up with the hiring committee, the hiring committee currently is met up with myself, uh, Councilman Trump, Councilman Saracen, but I'd be happy to, um, attend and take away my, um, voting power and put you on there, so we still have an odd number, if you wanna participate, it'd be a good way to incorporate you into the process.
Was there concern about quorum though?
Oh, yes, that is correct, that is correct, with me on it, there's no voting power, that is correct, it would have to be one of the other members if they did that, not my very. Very good, thank you. Uh, okay, uh, our last item is to get a motion to adjourn, before we do that, uh, everybody have a good evening, but, uh, you do need to stay, Josh, 'cause I have to have your signature on something, and we'll get our paperwork done, other than that, if there's no other comments, we, uh. Second, second, so, that motion was mentioned and seconded by Joe, alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, thank you all for attending, have a good evening.